Six forty-five.
Six forty-five.
Six, what did I say?
Six P M.
Sorry, six forty-five.
Number Wyatt?
Here.
Number Owen?
Here.
Number Cleister?
Here.
Number Stroya?
Here.
Number Warren?
Here.
Number Matheny?
Here.
Number Orr?
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, at this time, we will begin the public comment period of our agenda. Uh, first topic is ordinance, uh, zero-one, twenty-twenty-five. Liam, would you please read the title for the record?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of North Canton to reclassify one parcel in the city of North Canton in accordance with the amendment procedure set forth in chapter eleven eighty-two of the planning and zoning code from its existing classification to Main Street North.
Okay, as you can see on the map here, um, this parcel, um, looking to, uh, change the classification to Main Street North. At this time, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance one, twenty-twenty-five?
Come on, sir.
Thank you. Uh, I'll be brief, but, uh, the city administration believes that this particular rezoning will help, uh, current efforts to market and sell four adjacent, uh, C I C owned properties. So this is a quarter acre with frontage on Eleventh Street. Uh, it's adjacent to four other C I C owned parcels on Main Street that are already zoned Main Street North. So we feel if we can rezone this property from R seventy to Main, or R fifty to Main Street North, uh, it'll set us up better to market and sell those properties. We currently have a request proposals out for, uh, all five properties. And, uh, when you look at the site and the way that it addresses the other four parcels, uh, we envision perhaps if the properties were purchased and redeveloped, this would make a nice spot either for green space or maybe some parking in the rear of new buildings that could be, uh, constructed. Um, it's consistent with the city's master plan that talks about strategic land banking and, um, more opportunities for commercial development on Main Street. Uh, we don't think it would be out of character with any of the surrounding land uses. So, uh, with that, happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions or comments? Um, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Okay, uh, at this time, is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to ordinance one, twenty-twenty? Okay, last call. Okay, this will appear on, uh, tonight's city council agenda. Uh, our second topic is ordinance, uh, zero-two, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, Liam, would you please read the title for the record?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of North Canton to reclassify one parcel in the city of North Canton in accordance with the amendment procedure set forth in chapter eleven eighty-two of the planning and zoning code from its existing classification to general business B.
Okay, and as you can see on the map, this is the slither, sliver one, um, and this would be, um, classified to general business B. At this time, inning one wishing to speak in favor of ordinance zero-two, twenty-twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'll be brief again because I believe Mr. Ellsworth might be speaking, so I'm gonna try not to steal his thunder, uh, with things that he might wish to say. But, uh, the purpose of this is this is a residentially zoned, uh, property currently. It's kind of an unusual situation. It's a long, narrow parcel, two-point-six acres. Uh, the other properties that are part of the Ellsworth business are actually in plain township, so this is kind of an isolated parcel that is in the city of North Canton. Uh, I know Mr. El- Ellsworth wishes to, uh, rezone it to expand his business. Uh, I've visited the site. I will say it's, I think, the nicest looking body shop that I've ever visited. It's really particularly maintained property and the existing buildings, uh, look really nice. So, uh, we feel in the administration, this would be a, a great, uh, opportunity to help a local business, uh, expand and serve our residents better. So, uh, do recommend, uh, approval of it, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer ours.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor tonight?
I can add a few things.
Sure.
If you'd like me to.
Yeah, please.
Please. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Jim Ellsworth. This is my wife, Jamie Leon Ellsworth Outobody. Our location where we're at is Little unique. My father purchased that property some seventy years ago. We purchased, we originally purchased it from the landowner of the property that we most recently acquired. And we're just primarily looking to put up an additional building to expand our business to keep it going. That's pretty much the gist of it. Questions you might have for me?
Good? Anybody? Questions, comments?
I was earned to.
Okay, so, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Um, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Final call? This will appear on tonight's agenda. And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, we'll start at seven. Prayer is going to be by Reverend Steve Kope tonight of Trinity Baptist Church. All right. Thank you, Steve.
Mayor? Yes? If that would be pleased? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. And thank you for life itself, for the measure of health, for the things that we need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. What we know in the scriptures, you said that the citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I'm asking that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues that we are facing today, for a sense of the welfare and true needs of our community, for our thirst for justice and righteousness, for confidence in what is good and fitting, and for the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agendas that before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of North Canton. And I pray all this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll turn the pledges, uh, allegiance over to the Girl Scouts of North Canton and then followed by the oath.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will do my best to be honest and fair, friendly and helpful, considerate and caring, courageous and strong, responsible when I say and do, respect myself and others, respect my role, use resources wisely, make the world a better place and be a sister and brother.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve as presented minutes from the February twenty-fourth. Oh, I'm sorry. Liam, would you please hold on?
Number Wyatt?
Here.
Number Warren?
Here.
Number Cleister?
Here.
Number Stroya?
Here.
Number Warren?
Here.
Number Matheny?
Here.
Number Orr?
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, uh, kind of a motion and a second to approve as presented minutes from the February twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, tw- two thousand twenty-five, N E P A public hearings, um, uh, in city council, the February twenty-twenty-five finance report, the twenty-twenty-four citywide annual report, and street department dump, salt, plow, truck, and the corresponding equipment contract award. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, slips, approve of one. At this time, Mayor Rogers invited to, uh, present a proclamation to the Girl Scouts of Northeast Ohio and our Girl Scouts.
Thank you, President Stroy. Could the, uh, Girl Scouts please stand up and join me right up here? Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending and, and parents and, and, uh, and our leaders. It's a great, great opportunity for me and an honor to present a special proclamation. You come over here a little bit, come on up here so we can see you. That's okay. Very good. So, my proclamation reads as this. Whereas March twelve, twenty-twenty-five marks the one-hundred, one-hundred-and-thirteenth anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Juliette Gordon Low in nineteen-twelve in Savannah, Georgia. Whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women to the highest ideals of character, conduct, and patriotism, including the current thirty-three thousand members in the eighteen counties here in Northeast Ohio. Whereas the Girl Scouts of Northeast Ohio supports twenty-five troops within the greater North Canton community. And whereas Girl Scouting connects girls to a world of possibilities in a positive and inclusive female-led environment where girls are inspired to discover their passions and are empowered to reach their full potential. And whereas through Girl Scouting, girls gain courage, confidence, and character to make their communities and the world a better place. And whereas more than twenty, or, excuse me, whereas more than two-point-six million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating years of this American tradition with nearly fifty million women who are former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. Now therefore, I seek to be wilder, Mayor for the city of North Canton, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March the twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, as National Girl Scout Day in the city of North Canton, and applaud the accomplishments of all participating Girl Scouts, their families, and the commitment Girl Scouting has made to America's girls, and proudly proclaim the week of March ninth through March the fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, as Girl Scout Week here in North Canton. Signed by me, Stephen B. Waller, Mayor. So, I want to thank you all for being here. It is Girl Scout Week. I wish you all the best and just for you to grow up to be the best person you can be, and Girl Scouting is a great way to help you do that. So, since you're the senior scout, I, who is my senior scout, right here? Scout, Girl Scout, I present that to you, and I applaud you for everything you do for our North Canton community. Ladies and gentlemen?
Thank you. And thank you. Okay. All right. Will you excuse us? We're gonna adjourn just for a minute. Girl, Girl? Thank you. Okay, so no one signed up for the first, uh, public speaks? Move to old business. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance zero-one, twenty-twenty-five?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of North Canton to reclassify one parcel in the city of North Canton in accordance with the amendment procedure set forth in chapter eleven eighty-two of the planning and zoning code from its existing classification to Main Street North.
As you can see on the map here, uh, this is the property, um, main, uh, near Mama Gisardi's. It's the easiest landmark. So this was discussed last week in the committee.
Uh, this was a while back.
Here, was it?
Yeah, so this has gone through planning commission, uh, was approved by planning commission, and then we just had the public.
So this came back from that, okay. I mean, it's pretty simple. It's, it's moving to Main Street North. Any comments, questions, uh, if anybody wants to talk to the administration on it as well?
The only thing I'll throw out is, is there had been some concerns from some residents, and I know that this is not the point where we'd be discussing this, but I just want to say this to get it on the record. There are some concerns that perhaps the vacated alley could at some point be used for ingress and egress to the new development, whatever goes in there. And while that would come at plan review stage, I just would like to state now that I oppose any use of opening that alley back for ingress and egress to that property. I don't think there's a concern here, but I just wanted to make sure that I stated that and, and share these residents' concerns.
That's fair, very fair. I agree.
But beyond that, I support it.
Um, and the people that had that concern has, have been talking to the city, so.
Okay.
We're, okay. Any other comments, questions? Uh, and this is the first reading, so there'll be two more readings, um, for people to speak on that. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, uh, ordinance, uh, one, twenty-twenty-five?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance two, twenty-twenty-five?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of North Canton to reclassify one parcel in the city of North Canton in accordance with the amendment procedure set forth in chapter eleven eighty-two of the planning and zoning code from its existing classification to general business B.
Okay, so this is the Ellsworth property, and you can see that up on the map as well. Any comments, questions? It, it's pretty self-explanatory. I think it was explained very well.
They're a fine local business. If we can help them grow, that's great.
Absolutely. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, approve the first reading of ordinance two, twenty-twenty-five?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance thirteen, twenty-twenty-five?
An ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Park Avenue Northeast from the south right-of-way of Howard Street Northeast and an adjoining portion of Whitworth Street Northeast to the west right-of-way of Taft Avenue Northeast within the corporate limits of the city of North Canton.
Okay, this is street now the job.
Okay, we discussed this last week, and we, this was the one we added, uh, like to Park Street. Remember there was, uh, we were gonna add, um, the, the other, uh, street onto that, and that was done?
No, I think we're talking about the Lake Park thing.
Oh, the North Park thing, okay.
So this was vacation.
Okay. This is pretty self-explanatory. Um, anything to add, Liam?
Uh, no.
I'll make a motion to pass the first, uh, reading, please.
Uh, I'll be at the seventh, so, public hearing, I'll make a motion.
Oh, public hearing, yeah.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing of ordinance thirteen, twenty-twenty-five for Monday, April fourteenth, um, at six forty-five P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And, um, I'll make a motion to postpone further consideration of ordinance thirteen, twenty-twenty-five until after the April fourteenth public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance nineteen, twenty-twenty-five?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of North Canton to reclassify one parcel in the city of North Canton in accordance with the amendment procedure set forth in chapter eleven eighty-two of the planning and zoning code from its existing classification to Park and Institutional.
Okay, so on the map, um, this was previously, um, the, is this the caveat?
No, this is.
This is the next to that?
This is the school district's property.
Oh, that's right, sorry. I'm getting confused. It's on that. Um, okay, so this, this, they just have a, the, um, uh, planning commission meeting about this. So this is, uh, the property gifted to the school, uh, by the, by I R G or M S C, whatever they're calling themselves. Yeah, so, any comments, questions, uh, on this? So I will bring up, um, it passed, uh, with one, uh, one opposing vote, uh, through the plan, planning commission.
I believe that was their conditional use, not their rezoning, that had the opposition vote.
Yeah, right, yeah. So, okay, here's unless we rezone it, uh, or if it's.
Exactly.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna make a motion to, um, set a public hearing on ordinance nineteen, twenty-twenty-five, um, for Monday, April fourteenth at six forty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and I'm gonna make a motion to postpone further consideration of ordinance nineteen, twenty-twenty-five until after, after the April fourteenth public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance twenty, twenty-twenty-five?
An ordinance continuing the community reinvestment area tax incentive agreement between the city of North Canton and thirteen oh-three to thirteen oh-five North Main Street and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, this is the, uh, North Ridge C R A. They've met their requirements. It's pretty much that simple. Uh, any comments, questions on this? Uh, I'll make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance, uh, I'm sorry, I skipped right ahead, but, um, I'll make a motion to adopt first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-five. right there, but, um, I'll make a motion to adopt first reading of ordinance 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'll make a motion to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And, um, I'll make a motion to adopt, um, ordinance 20, 2025 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance 21, 2025?
An ordinance accepting the annexation of six parcels totaling 2.79 acres owned by the City of North Canton located in Jackson Township, Stark County, on Whipple Avenue Northwest and Wise Avenue Northwest, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, as you can see, these are the six parcels that were part of the, uh, Jackson shared development on Wise, um, and we are trying to finish up the annexation of those. Uh, any comments, questions?
I'd just like, I'd just like to object that Liam didn't read all the parcel numbers.
He never let you get one.
Yeah, right. Liam, could you read the parcel numbers?
Are you waiting for me to read all the parcel numbers?
Do it.
You're my boss.
We did it to them.
Stark County parcel number is 1619664, 1601220, 1601222, 1601223, 1600422, 1600423, the territory.
What was that middle one? No. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance, uh, 21, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'll make a motion to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'll make a motion to adopt, um, ordinance 21, 2025 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance 22, 2025?
An ordinance authorizing appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the period beginning January 1st, 2025 and ending December 31st, 2025.
So this, yeah, this will actually finance.
Okay, so just, um, shoring up the budget and just a few items, uh, a total request for 255,000 and then some, uh, uh, $3,000 for the building department computer, 10,000 plus for insurance reimbursement for a wrecked police vehicle, and then, um, a 2,000 bench donation, uh, for some of the supplemental, and then, one of the good things is, uh, typically we have, we had, uh, I'm sorry, my screen just went down and I can't see, um, we had allotted half funds for the first part of the year and second part of the year to do a salt dump plow truck and then a dump plow truck because we thought that they would take longer to build, but they don't, so we're gonna save the financing costs of about 25,000 and buy them right now. Sound good? And then, um, additional revenues, we had, uh, some net profit from Arrowhead, a couple thousand in park bench, uh, $2,000 in police forfeiture, and then a, the 10,000 reimbursement for, to replace the wrecked car, which is just kind of off studying the other car. Anything else?
Sounds good.
Alright, any other questions or concerns? That was a good one, we saved 25,000. I like that. And insurance paid for our new police car. Okay, um, I'm going to adopt, yes, sorry, um, ordinance 22-2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'll make a motion to adopt, uh, ordinance 22, 2025 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Liam, would you please read the title of resolution 23, 2025?
A resolution authorizing the North Canton Community Improvement Corporation as the agency of the City of North Canton for industrial, commercial, distribution, and research development to post a request for proposals for the purchase and/or development, property owned by the City of North Canton, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, uh, we did discuss this a little bit last week, and Jason, give me other thoughts on this, but just kind of looking at different art pieces and thinking, are there other experts that know how to develop this land better than we do? So we'll see what comes back and see what decides. Anything else?
No, I think that covered it. Tell, tell, uh, tell everybody you know, once the art piece goes out.
Right. Creative expertise development.
Trying to get all those words in there.
Right. Alright, um, I, um, we turned off the first reading of resolution 23 dash 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And, uh, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 23, 25, 2025 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Liam, would you please read the title of resolution 24, 2025?
Resolution declaring city council support of state issue two concerning the renewal of the state capital improvement program on the May 6th, 2025 statewide ballot.
Ordinance rules.
Thanks, um, we just, we talked about this at our last meeting, which is Committee of the Whole, and Ben did a really good job explaining what this issue is all about, if you didn't, wouldn't mind explaining it again.
Yeah, um, so the state issue two, which our voters will see on their ballots in this May, um, functionally authorizes the state of Ohio to fund capital improvement programs in communities throughout Ohio, and we, as the City of North Canton, are hoping to receive more than 6 million of state funds for capital projects over the next decade, so, um, we would be very appreciative if our community would support this issue by the state.
Any other questions? I was just talking to a resident about this today, we were talking about paving projects and how much Rob likes the ones where he can go out and try to find his grant dollars to match with our dollars, um, and so that's, makes sense that we would want to support such an issue. Uh, if there aren't any other questions, I'll make a motion to adopt the first reading of resolution 24, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Liam, would you please read the title of resolution 25, 2025?
A resolution in support of city administration's decision to prohibit parking on Orchard Avenue Northeast and Charlotte Ave-, or Charlotte Street Northeast in front of the Debold Next Door facility.
Okay, we, we heard from, uh, Debold last week, and we did a pretty good job, and it's just for safety reasons, um, so, uh, if there's anything to add, I make a motion that we take resolution 25, 2025. I have a motion to pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Liam, if you'd read the preamble for the, uh, next, uh, portion of publics.
At this time, members of the public who have signed up to address city council will be called to do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes. Speakers shall be called in the order they signed up. During this section, comments shall be limited to items reasonably under the city's authority. The rules for speaking and speaker's time will appear on the screens. After you have finished speaking, please remain at the podium to answer questions from the officials of the dais. This will serve as the final warning for all speakers. Any violation of the rules will result in rejection from the premises.
Okay, Liam, alright, so we have three speakers signed up, uh, for this evening. The first is Anna Woodward. If you please, uh, come to the podium and, uh, state your name and address.
I haven't done this before, so.
Oh, you're fine, you're okay.
Um, my name is Anna Woodward, my husband died, Dirk. We live, uh, we own a home up on West Maple Street at the top of the hill. We, we've had that home for 33 years. And the reason I'm here is because we are both concerned about the overall decline of our immediate neighborhood. Uh, the trash in the streets, the, the properties that are not kept up, in the summertime, the grass and the weeds grow, and, uh, in particular, our house faces West Maple, behind us is Allison, it's a, it's a city street, but it kind of looks like an alley. Yeah, and between Williman and Hillcrest on Allison, it looks like a ghetto. It is absolutely horrific, and I've never seen it this bad in 33 years. And some of the properties even that face West Maple are just, I don't know if they're rentals, I don't know who lives there, uh, but they're not picking up the trash, there's trash all over the properties, trash in the streets, uh, and again, like I said, in the summertime, a lot of times the, the, the grass and the weeds grow up, it's just an absolute eyesore. There's junk, junked-out cars, uh, one lady's got a junked-out chicken coop, and at one point, we had chickens running through the alley, and, I mean, it's just, uh, really gone downhill, and it's a concern for us. And we don't know if there's a standard, if there's a law, if, if, if there's anything, any way to enforce cleaning up this area and making it, making it nice again. In North Canton, nice again.
And you said on West Maple, and what was the other street you said?
Excuse me?
What was the other street you said?
Allison.
Allison, okay.
Allison, uh, it's directly, it's one block north, it runs parallel with West Maple.
And I'm thinking I'm looking at my map, for some reason does not have a name, so I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, there's Allison, and it's, and it's specifically between Williman and.
Hillcrest.
Hillcrest, yes. And it's an absolute, it's an absolute disaster, and that is like a block from, oh, and the other thing is, the, there's a lot of people, a lot of dogs, and a lot of dog waste all over the place. Also, at Whitworth Park, we noticed that, because we, we're both retired, we take walks around the neighborhood, we go to Whitworth Park, and people, there's so much dog dirt all over that park, it's just, I won't even take my granddaughter there.
And that was which part?
Whitworth.
Whitworth? And you live on the west side, or not the west side, the west side or the south?
Well, we go all around the park.
Do you live on the north?
Oh, oh, uh, our house faces south, so I guess we would be on the north side.
North side, okay.
Yeah.
Which, which is your address?
We have the Big Tandra House at the top of the alley.
What's the address then?
553.
553, thank you, okay.
553 West Maple.
And I guess also English.
I just, in 33 years, I've never seen it this bad, so I felt like I, I felt compelled to come, and I don't even know if this is the right network.
Yeah.
I felt compelled to come because it breaks your heart, my, my kids in that house.
And real quick, and I'm gonna ask, uh, administration, is this sufficient enough to investigate these as possible nuisance violations, or can we send a code officer out?
Well, you know, we do have a code enforcement department, and they do, um, you, there is a process in which you can file a code enforcement, you can open a claim. Do you know how to do that through our open-up system or online? Because we can say after and show you how to do that.
We've, we've made several calls, so the police department and, 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 or did you call City Hall about some of the, I know I know the police.
We can talk after, you can give me specific addresses, we can look it up and see where the cases are.
I agree about chickens. I love chickens. No, I mean, they were running around foraging through the garbage. I mean, it was just awful.
Well, thank you very much for sharing, and I'm, I'm the councilman for that area, so I'd love to speak with you guys afterwards too, so we can chat.
Okay, well, thank you.
And I'm a councilman for Whitworth Park, so I'll take it.
Oh, good. Yeah, yeah, then you, you guys are the ones that need to hear about it.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for Anna? Uh, moving on, uh, Pat Patterson.
Hi, everybody. Lou, Pat Patterson, 1754 Street, Conne Falls, also known as the Fifth Ward. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, come, on the 6th of April, more or less serving a reminder, I, I know I spoke on this before, but on the 6th of April, 8:00 AM, behind the YMCA, remember, I remember this time, uh, we will be having a community walk, and just anybody who will could just come, uh, the North Canton Heritage Society is joining us, and is gonna have a table and have some things, uh, they have some activities planned as well for the walk, we're just gonna get together, uh, enjoy our neighbors, and, uh, hopefully we can even learn something while we're there, so. 6th of April, 8:00 AM, behind the Y, early.
Alright, thank you. Sounds like a plan.
If you're not there, be a not good thing.
I'll be there this time.
Hey, I'd love to see everybody there, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Pat. Comments, questions for Pat? And the last speaker, we have Jack Monter.
Can we go back here?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
I got a sore, oh, knee.
Oh, that's okay. Well, if, yeah, if you can, you can just sit there, that's fine.
That's alright.
Sorry, yep.
You can, if you, if you're.
I'm Jack Monter, I live down on Pittsburgh Avenue.
And your address is?
Actually, I'm the first house into the city limits coming from the north to, towards Portage. Been there since 72, and there's, uh, reeds and some, um, but what I'm interested in is, what am I gonna be taking out of my left pocket and put it into my right pocket with this deal of taking, paying part of my real estate tax? Who do I see that, I wanna like to know if I'm taking out a hundred dollars out of this pocket and, and put it in this one, or am I taking a hundred out of this one and putting it in this one? Because my taxes, my real estate taxes for half went from 1373 to 1732 just this year. I used to own a property up on Portage 2, but I sold it, anyway, it has nothing to do with it, but, uh, I would kind of like to know, uh, who would I see that what I will get if I vote on this or not? I'm not gonna vote on something, I'm gonna pay out 600 dollars here, I don't wanna get 300 dollars back over here.
Great, sure.
So, does anybody know who I could see about that?
Uh, I mean, you can see any of us about that? Um, you can talk to administration, uh, Ben, you can answer questions.
I'd be happy to help you with the calculator after the meeting.
Yeah.
We have a calculator.
Yep.
Yep.
After this?
After the meeting, I'll stay and talk to you.
He'll tell you how much. Sir, we have a calculator online, so when people go to our website or they, looking at the North Canton site, there's a button, and you put in your household income, you put in your, um, what is it, um, how much you make, and then it gives you back how much your taxes are. So we're trying to give people that information because a lot of people are like you, and they wanna know what, what pockets it's coming out of.
I'm one on 92 years ago.
Yes. Well, then Ben can help you.
Kind of limited my money anymore, you know?
Yeah.
I just retired in 83 as a carpenter.
Yeah, that's great.
And so that?
I was 83 when I quit.
Right, we're trying to make it so that people can figure it out, just like you, but they can always call any of us or any administration, and we can help.
And another, and another distinction to share would be is, and I'm sure Ben will go over this with you, if you're retired and have no earned income, so your retirement doesn't count.
I'm not hearing you.
I tell you, Ben, Ben will help you here at the very end, so, okay.[1732.12]
Thank you. Jack, what was your address? What's your address?
Nine thirty-nine.
Nine thirty-nine, thank you.
First time. Another thing is, uh, when I moved to North Canton through that, actually, I, I was in North Canton since fifty-one at Woodside. But anyway, used to have a nice sign at the entrance of the city. It said something about the, uh. They had a little fence. It was nice. Do you know what I have now? A plain old sign about this big, it says City of North Canton. One down beside it said, not too far from it, it says thirty-five mile an hour. I don't know, not maybe fifty.
Yeah, people go past that.
The only one, like, every city, you know, different directions. And they have either a brick, I don't need a brick, but one, but I'd like to have something to.
A little fence.
Yeah, something nicer.
It was like a, it was a wood fence and was right on their line. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And let's move on to our department reports. Start with the mayor.
Well, thank you, President Stroya. Once again, thank you for your patience tonight. I appreciate the Girl Scouts of Northeast Ohio for out there, for this youth organization, helping build courage and confidence and character in the, uh, in the, uh, our community and hopefully making our community, our nation, a better place also to live. Their participation, their participation tonight was greatly appreciated by myself. And I just wish them to keep up their good work in, in community service. I wanna thank our city administration, that team for re, uh, redesigning and reformatting our North Canton City Sun, our spring edition. And I, I know this team worked very hard in presenting this format. And I wanna just give a special thank you also to our administrative specialist, Jennifer Cross, who put her journalism skills to work to help give us a little bit of guidance on this. And with me being out and about, I have heard only positive comments about the way it's been presented, how it's read. And, uh, and they like the format. So again, I wanna thank our team for putting that together and our department heads providing information as we go forward. On a personal note, on Friday, March the seventh, I had the opportunity to volunteer on a day to give back at Meals on Wheels. It's part of the Advantage Aging and, uh, and I had opportunity to work on the line and make meals with the volunteers there. I made about four hundred, or helped assemble four hundred breakfast meals that day. And just a side bit of information for our North Canton community. We right now have sixty-six clients that receive benefits from the Meals on Wheels in our city. And deliveries are first, third, and fifth Fridays, second and fourth Mondays, and second and fourth Thursdays. And since October of twenty twenty-four to March, the day that I was volunteering, three thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven meals have been served, delivered to our, the clients in our North Canton community. So I thought that was pretty cool. And I just wanna give a shout out to the project development manager, Nora Logsdon, L-O-G-S-D-O-N, and Jennifer Canny Beebe. She's the Director of Home and Community-Based Services. And I wanna thank their team for allowing me to put an apron on and gloves and get behind the line to help my opportunity to give back to the community through Meals on Wheels. This organization is also, as they wanted me to remind everybody here, that they're always looking for volunteers to help deliver their meals. So I wanna just thank them for allowing me to be a part of that. And tonight, as you voted on and as presented, our twenty twenty-four Annual City Report is in your hands. I wanna thank our city administration and team again for coordinating that for this year. And I think it's a nice overview of some of the things that we've accomplished this year in twenty twenty-four. So, uh, and of course, I appreciate our community in coming forward and speaking your concerns. And we will look into those things, uh, I can, I can promise you that, okay? We will look into those things. If not, I know that your ward council members will also work in, look into those issues for us. And, uh, and Mr. Monter, uh, on a side note, don't you have a son, was it Kevin?
Yeah.
And Kevin and I were.
Yeah, he was a part-time policeman.
We were police officers together at one time.
Yeah, he's in Florida now. He's, he's a, he's a cabinet maker, he's working on houses in Florida that are over three million.
Well, it was, uh, we had a good time.
He's very busy.
Very good. And I know you've been busy in our community and thank you for what you did.
I think he's, he was born in sixty-two, so he's fifty years old.
He's a little younger than me, but that's okay. Thank you very much. So I just was, a side note there, but thank you, President Stroya, for allowing me to share those few comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Catherine.
Thank you, President Stroya. I just wanted to note, you may have heard earlier today and you may have seen a, an article in the repository, to which I also posted on our city Facebook page, a, a little update. There was an incident that happened around one PM where residents that live along the west branch of the Nimmishillan Creek called in a concern that they saw some white substance flowing through the water. So originally, our fire captain, I mean, I'm sorry, our fire chief, Drew Kramer, went down and responded. There's no cause for alarm. The white substance that they found was, was originated from the well that we're drilling up at Arrowhead. And it was as simple as the crews were, um, just rinsing and the, um, just, it's sort of a harmless mix of just shale and some grit. And when they were rinsing off the, um, the bed where, uh, you know, where they're drilling down through, uh, up at the site, it, when it hit the water, sort of gave it like this white appearance. So the article in the repository sort of said at around four PM that, you know, they didn't have any more details. So I put it on our Facebook page of the more details. We, we contacted immediately Starksville Water Conservation and they came out, they took a look at it. They just basically said, when you, when they start again and when they're rinsing, they should put this sock on to catch the debris. And that's all it is, it's not hazardous, um, there's no drilling fluids being used right now, the only thing that's being used is water. So they're still working on phase one of that, uh, well project. And, um, and we're getting updates from the, um, project manager on site out there. And we'll keep you updated, but no cause for alarm with that.
One other thing, my oldest son designed the band buses, decals for the first two band buses. My son designed those. He works for Innis Majori every day, art director there today.
Uh, Gina, or Jim, or both?
Well, finance, quarterly financial reporters.
We have to start our reminders at thirty-five days to file your taxes.
Thanks for that. Ben?
On the topic of income taxes, we've scheduled two public forums for the income tax proposal for members of the public to come ask any and all questions they may have, to get help with the calculator, whatever they may need. The first one is this week, on March thirteenth at five thirty PM at Dogwood Shelter. Um, and then the second is April eleventh at three PM at City Hall. And they're both two hours, so we'll be there for a fair amount of time. You don't have to stay the whole time, come in, get your questions answered, leave again. Um, second, we have, uh, come, reached an agreement to formalize our relationship with the North Canton Public Library and senior programming and actually sort of put into writing what that relationship is. I know when we talked about budget, council said that was a program that was important to you all to maintain. And so we're taking steps to try and do that. The City Hall HVAC project architect submissions were due last Friday. And so we're now in the grading process and we'll hopefully have a recommendation back to you all to award a contract for that soon. Again, staff in City Hall are very excited for that. It was quite warm in City Hall today. Just a quick note for the greater North Canton area. Orion Street will be closed starting tomorrow, I believe. Plain Township has a paving project that we're a partner on, we're at a new water line. And the utility work begins tomorrow. So there will be delays, try to avoid that area. As Mayor alluded to, and thank you for the nice compliments, Mayor, we have for you all tonight, and you approved the twenty twenty-four citywide annual report. So this is something we tried to start just to provide a better recap of what happened this year and be transparent and provide information to our residents on all of the city departments. Some of our departments, like Police and Fire, already did their own annual reports every year. But, um, this encompasses the entire city, including touching on how we advanced the master plan, just some fun highlights of the year and even our budget, end of year budget information from closeout. If there are any questions from council on that report, I'd be happy to take them now or if not?
Can I interject and say a big thank you to Danielle Swineheart? She is the lead on this. We have a staff member, administrative assistant that is excellent with typography. You see her around, that's where a lot of these pictures come from, we never had that before. So, you know, our mayor mentioned Jennifer Cross does the newsletter, she's an administrative specialist. So our admin's not, in addition to answering the many, many phone calls they take daily with residents and answering questions, solving problems, people coming to the window, they also do special projects, like writing the newsletter and doing annual reports. So they're so valuable to our team.
You stole my next point. Yes, thank you to Danielle.
Next point.
Next point, I was gonna be saying thank you now. And on that phone call point, uh, one of the fun facts is that City Hall received more than eighteen thousand phone calls last year.
We just have a couple people that answer those phones, we don't have a call center.
Yeah, so then my last thing is a brand new program, which is the, uh, a surprise for all of you. I'm very excited about this program. I was first introduced to the idea of it at the International City Managers Association Conference. And I'm very grateful to Catherine for letting me try to get it off the ground here.
Excited too.
And it is a civic leadership academy.
CLA.
Some communities call them resident academies, various other names. Really, the, at the core of what it is, is it's a free program where residents can sign up to come learn more about their local government. And not just in a sort of boring classroom setting, but they will also get to do ride-alongs with police, fire, go to water treatment plant, go to water and street job sites and really get some hands-on experience. So twenty twenty-five will be our inaugural class of this civic leadership academy. And so we're looking for six to eight brave residents who would like to take, take part in this, uh, program. We have tried to make it as accessible to working adults as possible. It is only three hours once a month. Two of the months are on Saturdays instead of weekdays. But really, to get the full experience of how your city functions, you have to see the staff doing their job while they're on duty. And so unfortunately, the rest, the remaining four sessions are during work hours. We've tried to put them on Fridays, either early in the morning or in the afternoon, so that you can either go to work late or leave work early. Again, it's totally free. If you go to our website, northcantonohio.gov slash CLA, you can sign up. The deadline to sign up is April eleventh, twenty twenty-five, and it is first sign up, first accepted.
Oh, this is a six-month commitment. So it is for people that really want to see this all the way through. And they will have a graduation ceremony with their very, you know, prestigious CLA. Can have an MBA or MPA with CLA from the City of North Canton in front of council. And it's like you said, it's the inaugural group, so we'll kind of, they'll be the guinea pig group that'll give us feedback on, you know, how it was, you know, how the sessions were and hope to continue it year after year. How much are you putting it up for people to sign up?
It'll be on our Facebook tomorrow, but we were.
Yeah, and we have these flyers.
Trying to do an announcement here tonight. We also have, I have flyers with me, there are flyers at City Hall.
Well, we'll see. We think six to eight is a good number for now. Maybe that's not enough, maybe we could handle more, maybe that's too many, we'll find out. We don't know, we don't know, but yeah, a lot of communities have this and so we got one on us. Is it open to all ages? Eighteen and above.
Eighteen and above. You will be required to sign a waiver to participate. You will be around heavy machinery, uneven ground, potentially required to stand for long periods of time.
Don't scare people.
For younger, the City of Green has like a, a student government thing, so that could be something down the road that we might wanna think of doing. But that's not what this is.
Jason, I see you sitting there. Do you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple things to share. So I wanted to let council know that in addition to a lot of the conversations that I know you're well aware of that we've had with the owner of the West Factory in the Hoover District, I've also been having a lot of just more informal discussions with the representatives with industrial, commercial properties, just on kind of taking a fresh look at the project, thinking about ways, maybe what sort of short-term things are there that could make the site look and feel a little bit better. And these, I wouldn't say these wouldn't supersede the discussions about the TIFF extension or anything like that, but just to kind of look at it from a fresh perspective. So I don't have anything extraordinary to announce tonight, but I think it's been positive to be building a rapport with, um, Maple Street Commerce and so forth. So if and when there are things to come out of, but I know that administration will, will fill you in and I'm sure we'll have some more of those discussions on the TIFF extension itself. On the RFPs quickly, so I'm working right now on, uh, an RFP based on the legislation that you passed tonight in terms of the Stradivant and Orion area. Also working on one for those properties between Whipple and Wise. And we are really trying to redouble our efforts with just getting the word out about these properties. I think the nice thing is if you look at everything that the CIC and the city own, we have a pretty good variety of properties. You know, everything from over twelve acres at Wise and Whipple to some of the smaller parcels on Main Street. And then on a final note, just on the business attraction side, we've also been working a lot with, you know, businesses that have showed interest in perhaps locating in the city. Those properties certainly come into play as we have those discussions. But also in general, like Ben said about the master plan, just looking at ways that we can kind of leverage some of the recommendations in the master plan and work toward, um, growing commerce in the city and, and building our tax base. So, um, really happy to be in this role and working with all of you. And, um, my, my phone is always available and my text messages or emails. If you have thoughts or suggestions or just wanna talk about economic development, I'm always happy to speak with any of you.
Thank you.
Jason, were you gonna talk about the corrective action plan?
Oh, yes, I can, if, uh, yeah, that's a good, good thing to announce. So we did, um, get the corrective action plan for the Hoover West Factory signed. What that means is the developer has agreed with us to engage in certain code enforcement, um, uh, requirements that we have. So, uh, the way that the corrective action plan is structured, um, there's some deadlines of April fifteenth for them to do certain actions in terms of some improvements to the exterior of the factory. Uh, there's another set of deadlines in June and then some quarterly actions they need to take. These would be things like repairing the windows, if there's any openings in the building. The plan, the plan goes into some detail about all that. It also requires that they register the building as a vacant property. The agreement was executed on March third. So one thing that the agreement says is that within thirty days, they have to, uh, pay us the fee for building registration, the first half of that, which is around thirty-eight thousand dollars. The second half then is due, uh, by June first, or if the TIFF extension is granted, whichever comes first. So, um, I think that's good news. It, it gets us on the right track with some of the short-term issues around the appearance of the building on the exterior, you know, as well as bringing in some revenue for the city. So we're happy that, um, we were able to come to an agreement with them.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to department reports. We're going to change.
I was gonna bite my tongue, but I'm very happy that you shared the corrective action plan and the vacant building registration. It's unfortunate that a little bit of force had to have been applied towards the end of last year, but I'm very, very happy with what I'm seeing from the administration and, uh, Jason. So thank you very much for moving that project or moving this situation forward, so very happy. Beyond that, I have no report. I was gonna share, Mr. Monter. I know why your name sounds familiar now when you mentioned that your, uh, son helped design the band bus. Lost my father a little over a year ago, but he was a band director for thirty-two years. And while I would have been considerably shorter that day, I can remember being there painting the first band bus. I think my mom dropped me off, she wanted me out of her hair.
I had all three of them, my kids were in band at the same time.
Very cool.
Grandkids are, and I got great-grandkids going to North Canton schools.
Okay, that's very cool. Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Thank you. And I have no other report.
Thanks. David.
I think it's wonderful that the Girl Scouts were here this evening, the projects that they do in their community, but I also think that they're future leaders. And being active in the scene that we do here is very important. So it was great to see them come and participate in tonight's meeting. Daylight savings time hit, so on the personal safety side, more walkers, more bike riders later in the evening, the weather's breaking, it's looking nice outside. Please be careful. Keep your eyes open, drive a little slower, be a little more cautious. As you get out in your yards, you're cleaning up, lend a hand, reach out to the sewers, make sure they're not clogged. We've got spring rains coming, I say this every year, but it's important that we're all neighbors here and we take care of our community. That is my report.
Push the crosswalk buttons. Melissa.
Thanks. Just a couple of small things that aren't small. Thank you to the mayor for referencing how nice the new look of the newsletter, North Canton Sun newsletter is. I agree. I think they did a great job. I've gotten lots of positive feedback. If somebody is concerned that maybe they didn't receive it in the mail, is there something that they can do? Because I have that, had that question asked, a couple people asked me that.
You can contact us, administration, we'll get to it.
You can check for it. Fabulous.
We also have many, many extras. That's it.
Yeah, perfect.
Awesome. I wanted to just compliment this, two things, the Leadership Academy and also the annual report. These are kind of things that are above and beyond and sometimes taken for granted, but that level of creativity that you see reflects pride of work. And it's something that we witness all the time with this leadership team in administration that we see here at council, but also all the other folks that work in administration behind the scenes that we don't always see. And I just wanted to recognize that, that that, when you're proud of your work in the way where you're like, how can I spend extra time, you know, devoting to this program? Because that's what this Leadership Academy program is, is you are, you two and others are saying, I'm willing to dedicate some extra time because I think this is a cool idea, and people would benefit from that. So I just wanted to recognize that, that sense of pride that we see, and, and I think that that's something that is unique, and we want to make sure that we value the right way.
Liam, I skipped you, sorry.
Well, I didn't have anything this weekend.
All right. John.
A couple of things. I got three messages about they received the newsletter. So I didn't do anything, I just mentioned it. I think it made them aware, and it's looking, you know, in the mail, and it's there. So I got three responses to that. Thank you, Catherine, for the nuisance person that told me about those treats, and he was getting it to eighty people, so we got those taken care of. Also, March twenty-first, which is a Friday, Matt Stroya, Dave Matheny, and myself will be having a, I didn't know what to call it, I call it Conversation with Council on, on my website. We'll be at Walters from eleven-thirty to one. That will be different from our morning session, it'll be eleven-thirty to one, bring their questions, what they have for the city, and we'll get their answers for them. So invite all of you there. It'll be in the back part of Walters, and they'll tell you what we're having. That's my report.
Stephanie.
Okay. Kind of same with Melissa, like noticing the way these things have been put together, they're relevant, they're colorful, the pictures speak a thousand words, so you're right, to have someone on staff that, that can do that really tells the story. And it's good information, it's easy to read, and like you said, you don't have to have it, you can do a one-pager and, and put it all down, but to have something like this is really impressive. Coming from a leadership world of seventeen years, this, this is very similar to programs we did, and back in the day, I used to do a Leadership Academy for all of Stark County. And so many of the people that participated in that, Melissa, did you, yes, Melissa, I did.
I did.
And you were just thinking about serving at that point, a long time ago, but to have different individuals and different thoughts and, but people on the same page was really neat. And so I love that we're doing something like this. I'm always more the merrier, so I think you can have more people than six to eight. I know it's your trial, but I also know that when you're putting these things together, it doesn't matter how many people in the room, and I think you're going to get a lot of people.
Well, the limitation isn't so much that I can't talk to that many people in the room, it's that I don't have enough police officers on duty to put you all in a car to go out with a police officer at the same time.
Okay, but see, you don't have to do it at the same time. People can sign up for shifts. So you could do that differently. I know, I'm just saying.
Then I'm volunteering even more time.
I get it. But I do think it's going to be something that, if people are smart, they'll sign up. And I think you're going to have a wide variety of people. I hope the young people do it, I hope middle, I hope working people, retirees, I just, I love those kind of programs. And happy to help with whatever you need, and give you assistance. And then the, your Facebook posts and your newsletters, they've really hit the point, and they're relevant, and they're pertinent, and I know that Facebook only reaches so many individuals, so we have to be mindful of that, and still do different things, should have water bills or, or different measures, but I definitely am seeing an increase in presence. So thank you for all that. And having the Girl Scouts here, it was me, Kelly Joseph, she reminded me when it was COVID, she had asked me to do a meeting, they were still meeting like virtually, and she had asked me to talk about government service. And in my mind, I'm like, oh my gosh, like what do these young Girl Scouts want to know? And she asked if her, my husband would also be there. So there we were, sitting on the couch during COVID, like in the camera, him speaking, me speaking, and I felt like we were in the nineteen fifties, you know, talking about government service. They were so, like, smart and inquisitive, they each had questions, parents were on, and so you look at that and you think of International Women's Day that just occurred, and you think that this is the start, and, and looking up to, to what
Future leaders.
we are representing, and, and future leaders, yeah. And it was really cute, the one woman, when she spoke, and she started the, her oath at a different spot, you could tell that she was a little shaken up, and she turned back to her mom, and her mom's like, it's okay, it's okay, it's okay. And, and I, and then either I was reading something, or Matt was reading something, and we didn't say it right, and I wanted to be like, see, it's okay. We all make mistakes, and that's how you learn and grow. So it was really nice to have them here. That's it.
Thank you. Christina.
I mean, really, I just echo what Melissa and Stephanie said. We're all cut from the same cloth, right?
Right, we are.
But I just, I feel fortunate that I get to work with this administration team in my day job as well, so I, you know, get to know all of the administrative assistants and specialists and everyone who's kind of in that office doing these things. And I know the pride that they take in the work that they're doing, and I'm just really grateful. And I, the team that has been assembled is really valuable, and I hope they know how much we appreciate them. And that's all.
Well, all the nice things you said tonight helps that.
Yeah, right.
Thank you, Anna, Jack, and Pat for speaking. I appreciate it. It was really cool to have the Girl Scouts. I'm glad you did that, Mayor. I enjoyed that a lot. And I have seen a ton of compliments about the newsletter, not to get repetitive. And I am also very excited to collect money for fines from IRG. So that's all I've got to say for tonight. Final call for new business. Okay, the meeting's calendar coming up. Let's see, March seventeenth, we have a committee of the whole. March twenty-fourth, there will be no meeting. March thirty-first is a regular council meeting, and April seventh is committee of the whole. So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favors, an aye?
Aye.